Good evening. I'm in a call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on February 6, 2024. All council members are here and present, and if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, with liberty and justice for all.
So I want to acknowledge that we, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawson Indian Tribe. With that, can I get a motion to approve today's agenda and consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. We've approved our agenda and consent agenda. And first up on our approved agenda is public comment. And let's start with our first person in person for public comment. Courtney. It's really good to see you. You know the drill?
Thank you. Yes. I never know whether to look that way or this way, so I'll just look at you. I'm Courtney Shreve, and I am the Mentor Program Liaison for North Thurston Public Schools. And do I need to say my address? Is that part of the... Okay. I am here tonight just to let you all know and the community know about our Lunch Buddy program. It existed in the past, but during COVID, it kind of went by the wayside. And so it's my pleasure to let you all know that we brought it back, and we would love to have you all, as well as city employees, as well as our community members, to be lunch buddies. I'm a lunch buddy myself at Mountain View. Right now, we're at all of our elementary schools and our middle schools, and it's just one hour once a week. If you're at the middle schools, it's only 30 minutes once a week. And one of your very own employees, Samantha Kiesler, is our City of Lacey representative, and she is at Horizons, which is also her alma mater. And the need for the lunch buddies is really growing, especially after COVID, and with kids have more mental health challenges these days. And so our counselors refer kids to our program. We're definitely in need of more males right now in our program, but ladies encourage you to sign up as well. And it's just, it's very needed to give these kids somebody outside of their family, outside of their teacher, somebody that they can come hang out with once a week and that they trust. You play games. We provide games and things like that. You have lunch. And certainly, we know people's people's schedules once in a while can need to be flexible, especially busy people like yourselves. But we we have you try to pick a day of the week that's going to be consistent because the kids come to count on that. So right now, we have about nine district employees who are lunch buddies. So I'd like to challenge the City of Lacey to help spread the word to your folks and through the community, because it's a really wonderful program that could really help change a kid's life. Hopefully, some of you have had mentors in your life. I know I did. And just having that special person that believes in them, that is there just for them, and it gives them positive attention instead of negative attention that they might seek out in the classroom. So just really excited about this program. We've got about 63 matches right now. We also have a peer mentoring program with Big Brother, Big Sister, where the high school kids mentor the elementary kids. So I will leave these with you. And if you have any questions, or want me to come talk to staff, or anything else I can do to help help spread this through our community, I'd really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's leave it. I look forward to it. There's information on how we sign up?
Yes, there's a there's a really simple application online, and there's a QR code there. And then we just have a very short online training. But we do screen our mentors pretty carefully because you're working with kids one-on-one. And yeah, it's a great opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have three people who pre-registered to speak via Zoom. And I'm going to turn it over to John to try and manage that for us. And when they come on, please introduce yourself, say where you're from, and you have three minutes to speak.
Oh, good. I'm here.
Yes.
Hi. Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little bit technically illiterate. My name is Whitney Bowerman, and I'm with Ole Camp Kitties. We're an outreach agency providing Spain it or vaccinate services to the cats of the unhoused community. We've spent the past several weeks working with the Desmond encampment in Lacey. I'm here to express concern about what I have seen transpiring in an effort to close the encampment. First, camp residents living in the camp for years were initially given a week by the Lacey Police Department to clear out. This is not enough time to negotiate the logistics of packing up belongings, rehoming pets, doing intakes, and trying to find suitable shelter or housing. Since then, the timeline appears to have lengthened, but there has been no clarity given, and residents are understandably anxious to know what is going on. Outreach workers are unsure of how much time they have to get residents squared away. Second, shelter has been offered to camp residents in an inconsistent fashion. Many camp residents have not been offered shelter because a by names list from 2021 has been used. The residents who have been offered shelter have not necessarily been offered shelter that meets their needs in order to be successful and remain housed. This is morally reprehensible and fiscally irresponsible. Third, the involved government entities, Lacey Commerce and DES, seem to be playing a game of hot potato. No one is providing ample clarity, but every entity is making piecemeal decisions that negatively impact the residents. Collectively, this is putting unnecessary pressure on vulnerable community members, as well as your own community partners. I'm encouraging you as elected officials to take a step back and look at the big picture, to network with your fellow governmental partners, and to keep your eyes on what the prize should be, which is to ensure the safety and well-being of everyone in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Stephanie Scott. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I am here tonight as a concerned citizen. I'm not affiliated with any nonprofits. I'm just a resident of Lacey, who has been onsite at Desmond Camp that you just heard Whitney talk about. I also presume and hope you'll hear an update from Councilmember Cox's Regional Housing Council update tonight. But I just want to say that there's a really big difference between what government officials are saying and what those of us on the ground see and hear at the camp. The PR narrative makes it sound like Desmond is shutting down and that everyone will be provided housing, but that simply is not true. There is still a lot of confusion, uncertainty, fear, lack of information, and the Lacey Mobile Outreach Team, MOT, has not been supporting residents of this camp, despite claims to the contrary. Additionally, residents have been subjected to harassment and intimidation tactics, including trees and bushes being cut down around and on top of their homes last week. And make no mistake, these are their homes. It's a heck of a lot easier to follow a by-name list that was created in 2021 tied to an MOU and say there are only eight people who need housing than to acknowledge the nuance and complexity of the true need. Right now, there are people waiting to find out if they'll be on the housing list for the one option being offered, or whether they will be expected to leave their established community with nowhere else to go. And I use those words intentionally, established community. For several, it means leaving partners and beloved pets behind if they choose to accept the housing being offered. For others, it means considering going into housing that doesn't meet their needs to maintain their sobriety, or feel like a safe option or good fit for various reasons that are all within their rights as human beings. MOUs and lists are worthless when we forget that there are people on the other side of those documents. The people of Desmond Camp deserve to be treated with love, compassion, empathy, and concern for their safety and well-being. I understand that parts of this process belong to the state. That does not absolve you of your responsibility to accurately communicate with state partners about the current day realities and needs at Desmond, to work with MOU partners to establish a reasonable timeline and accurate by-name list, and work with community partners to secure adequate services and housing for displaced camp residents, who I might add are also Lacey residents you were elected to serve. If budget is an issue, perhaps housing people should be a bigger priority than a $60 million regional police training center. Thank you for your time, consideration, and more importantly, your future accountability and action.
And I was just told that was our last online registered speaker. Our next agenda item is under proclamation for Black History Month. City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Black and African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And?
Whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted African American historian, scholar, educator, and publisher, founded the Association for the Study of African American Life and History and initiated Negro History Month in 1926, selecting the month of February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Blacks in American history and beyond, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families, communities, and the nation. And?
Whereas the first enslaved Africans were brought to the Americas in 1619, marking the beginning of legalized slavery, which continued with the founding of the United States of America and was legal in the country until the ratification of the 13th Amendment in 1865. And?
Whereas, since the abolishment of slavery, many iterations of racist laws and policies were instituted across the country that served to disenfranchise Blacks and African Americans from full political, economic, educational, and social opportunities. And?
Whereas, despite these abhorrent attempts to enslave and then exclude them, as a result of their determination, hard work, and perseverance, Blacks have made invaluable and lasting contributions to our community, the state, the nation, and the world, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, medicine, the military, sports, and the arts. And?
Whereas the Association for the Study of African American Life and Histories 2024 theme is African Americans and the Arts. And whereas the Lacey City Council is committed to creating a community where everyone feels safe and welcome, and the observance of Black History Month calls our city's attention to the continued need to dismantle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month in the City of Lacey and urge all community members to recognize the continued need to dismantle racism and to build a society that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, February 6, 2024.
To Mayor Ryder, the City Council, and the residents of Lacey, on behalf of Pearl Foundation of Pege Sound, I'm deeply honored to accept Black History Month proclamation from the City of Lacey City Council. Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievement by African Americans and for recognizing the central role in their central role in U.S. history. This recognition not only celebrates the rich tapestry of Black heritage, but also acknowledges the tireless effort of many organizations like ours in uplifting, empowering our community. As we embrace the theme for the Black History Month 2024, African Americans and the Art, it explores the key influence African Americans have had in the field of visual art and performing art, literature, fashion, language, films, music, and other forms of cultural expressions. At the Pearl Foundation, we believe that service is essential to the soul of a community. Therefore, we commit, we are committed to fostering positive change across the Pege Sound area. Through our various initiatives, we strive to promote education, advocacy, cultural enrichment amongst the youth of the Pege Sound area and beyond. From providing scholarship and mentoring program to supporting local businesses and organizing community events, our work is centered on creating pathway for growth, resilience, and unity. This proclamation serves as a testament to the collective dedication of our board members, volunteers, partners, and supporters. We continue to, who continue to champion diversity, equity, and inclusion in every aspect of our endeavor. As we celebrate Black History Month, let us recommit ourselves to honoring the past, celebrating the present, and shaping a future where every voice is heard, every dream is within reach for members of our community. Again, thank you to the City of Lacey City Council for this esteemed recognition, and we look forward to continuing collaboration in building a more equitable and vibrant Pege Sound community for our generations to come. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you. Next up on our approved agenda is under the mayor's report. And the first up is our Hearings Examiner appointment. Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Before each night is a request to accept the recommendation of the FPOC interview panel, who conducted interviews of hearings and candidates last week. The committee is recommending three very qualified applicants to authorize the city manager to enter into professional services agreement with Phil Olbricks of Olbricks and Associates, BLCC. Again, all the candidates were highly qualified, but the straw bricks rose to the top through his demeanor and experience of over 30 years of asking the examiner. And if there's any questions the council has, I can answer those for the other chairman.
Sure. I just wanted to say that I want, first of all, give my thanks to Councilmember Vasquez and Councilmember Greenstein, and especially with Councilmember Vasquez, who did a lot of the back work and got things ready for us to do this interview. And I just want to appreciate all the work that you did on that. We've, this committee has met now a couple of times for a couple of different reasons. But in each time, I think we've selected very, very good candidates. So if there's anything else that you guys want to add to this?
No, the only thing I would say is that all three candidates were, I thought, exceptional. But I do think that the decision, the recommendation that we're making today was the best choice for the city, and I think he'll do a great job for us.
Agreed. We were spoiled for choice. It was kind of a tough decision, but I think we picked a good one.
Absolutely. So I would move that we authorize the city manager to enter into a professional service agreement for a hearing examiner as recommended by myself and the committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Then all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries.
Thank you, council.
And then next up on the mayor's report is the reappointment for Pamela Nelson to the library board. She served one term, and I'm happy to move that we reappoint Pamela Nelson for a second term on the library board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Then all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries as well. And next, I'll turn it over to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. And we have one item on the city manager's report. We have an interlocal agreement for Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Regional Initiatives. And this is in an agreement to establish the implementation of the 2024 regional initiatives. And I'd like to invite our Lindsey Fields to come up and give a little background on the agreement and the key points of it for council's consideration.
Good to see you all again.
Good to see you.
Back at it. First of all, I'd like to say I'm a lunch buddy as well, and it is a very awesome thing to do once a week. So I'm at the middle school, so they don't really like to be us to be called lunch buddies, which I get it. So I call myself a mentor, just the fancier version. Actually, let me grab mine. So tonight, we're going to be talking about an interlocal agreement for the 2024 TCMC. And for those of you who need a reminder, that just means that Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Regional Initiatives. So just a quick reminder of the collaborative structure. It's a jurisdictions are leading the effort. We have the staff team, which I'm a part of, and then Olympia, Tomwater, and Thurston County all have a counterpart. Then we have the Community Advisory Work Group, which provides perspective. And then we have the Executive Committee, which champions the ideas. And so there's this whole intersection of where we work together. And the major thing that we do every year is work collaboratively on one regional initiative, but really, it's two. There's a policy portion and a program, program portion as well. So the TCMC process for selecting a regional initiative, we, the staff team works with the Community Advisory Work Group, the CA, an executive committee to prepare proposals for regional initiatives. So the CA get a chance to share what they'd like to see happen. They get to go through a process in one of their meetings where they talk it out, present all of the options they'd like to see the collaborative work on. The EC get that same courtesy. They get to put forth initiatives they'd like to see us work on. And then the staff team get to put forward proposals as well. And kind of, and then after that, we kind of go through this process where we narrow down. And really, we're looking at what would benefit from regional collaboration, because not everything would. Some things might just apply to one or two jurisdictions. One jurisdiction might already be doing something and really wouldn't contribute a whole lot, and it'd just be the three other ones doing something. And then also, and so when we narrow that down, we come together at an annual retreat, and then we all talk it out. Last year, Lacey hosted it. This year, it'll be at Olympia. And we take about four hours. We go through the work plans for each of the jurisdictions, and then we have a facilitator walk us through the options and get us to consensus on one thing. And then we'll take that to the EC, the Executive Committee, and they approve it. And then the staff team really get to work. We get to work forming ILAs to do the work together and share costs, and then also just designing the programs and putting the policy into place, as you'll see. And so the two regional initiatives, which started out as Home Energy Disclosure Model Ordinance, and then there was a big push to see a program component with that, which I totally understand. And so there's the Energy Efficiency and Electrification Campaign, or Triple E's, as we're calling it, because that is a mouthful to say constantly. And then the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance. So the Triple E campaign will be, there's three components. I'll get into it. Really, the implementation part of it will be in 2025, as will the Home Energy Score Disclosure. What we're working on this year is just planning these out, doing stakeholder outreach, trying to put a policy together, put a program together that works for our community. And that's what you'll see in the ILA. And so for regional initiatives, there's the TCM staff team, which is me. There's project co-managers. So each of the, the program portion and the policy have co-managers. Lacey is leading the, with Tomwater, the Home Energy Score Model Disclosure, because right now, we have a, we kind of have an energy thing in place right now that we're doing. And so we figured it would be best for us to go about it this route. And then Olympia also has Energize Olympia, which we'll probably be expanding on with the campaign. So it really makes sense for them to, to kind of lead that portion. And so Thurston and Olympia are leading the campaign, jurisdictions, parties, and then contractors. And City of Olympia will be managing that contract with whoever we go with for the, for the stakeholder outreach, and we'll get into the budget as well. Funding. So each party shall contribute an equal share of funds sufficient for the execution of contractor services. So this is going to equal about 14,875 per party. There's more budget in later slides. And then we've also, just so you're aware, in the future, especially with the implementation, it most likely won't be equal share when we come down to the campaign portion, because we'll be using EECBG funds from the federal government, and that's by population size. So there'll be different amounts for different jurisdictions. And some jurisdictions might be contributing more or less. And Tomwater doesn't even get EECBG funding through the formula grants. So they'll be figuring out funding as well. So to be continued this year. Energy Efficiency and Electrification Campaign, or Triple E's. This is going to include, so the background is 2022 Inflation Reduction Act, had the potential to kickstart residential decarbonization, and actually, residents right now can apply for tax credits if they've done energy upgrades to get those monies through the Inflation Reduction Act. There's also going to be state rebates coming through with that funding as well, hopefully this year, if not into 2025. So this really kickstarted this whole electrification. Because if some of you might remember, we've had these conversations with our CA too, like 10 years ago, the big push was switching to natural gas. That was the way to go. So now we're like, okay, well, you got to electrify, actually. That's the way to go. So the conversation was steered back towards electrification with all of this money that we have been coming to really help folks get switched over. And then, you know, a goal is just to make sure that people are aware of these technologies, that they have access to the information around that. And then also, for those who are aware, still face barriers, including high upfront costs. We really have a program in place to help them break those barriers and get equipment. So it's going to include three parts. Two of them are already going because of this thing called Switches On Campaign. Thurston County and Olympia are currently paying for Switches On because they're the county and county seed. And then I think Tacoma, Pierce, and King County, and Seattle maybe, are contributing as well. And it's really a pilot program. It's, Switches On is just a, it's funded through, well, it's working with the state to have all the rebate information in one spot for Washington State. So actually, our rebates are on there right now with City of Lacey. So you can go through the Switches On campaign, and you can find our rebates, and they'll kick you to our website for our matching rebate program, which is really great. But yeah, so we might expand that in 2025, but none of the funding for this is actually going to Switches On, because Thurston County, Olympia is paying for that. And it just kind of took one part away that we now don't have to plan, which is really great. The other part is advisory support service. So an add-on to that is having someone to talk to, a set number of phone calls. You can call up someone, and they can walk you through applying, or just through what all of the different technologies mean. The other part is kind of more low, low hands-on, is that you kind of walk through like an AI system, and you make, you know, you make choices, and it tells you kind of what you'd like to do or what you should do. And then the local incentive and outreach campaign, which will be us providing money or a rebate or some sort to get heat pumps or home energy score disclosures, stuff like that. And so, yeah, advisory support, so personalized support. You can talk to someone, or you can get more personalized approach than just what is on Switches On. And then the local incentive and outreach campaign. We'll be designing and planning in 2024 for a 2025 launch. Just want to be clear, none of this funding is for the actual implementation of the program. Build off the success and lessons of Energize Olympia, expand heat pump campaign to a wider range of services. So we're just not doing heat pumps, but more electrification stuff as well. And then time limited discounts and installation of services, targeted outreach and marketing campaign. A big part of this is getting super targeted outreach. A big part of this is getting super targeted outreach to folks who need it as well. Anticipated funding sources, which is on Thurston County, there we go. Olympia, King, Pierce, they're all contributing. Phase one design and implementation, each TMC jurisdiction will contribute, is contributing equally to that. This is the phase, so we're kind of like in the research and stakeholder engagement section, step two. And then we're getting really into step three, which will be developing the campaign plan and then going to stakeholders and asking for their suggestions and how they perceive this. And I just want to, like, mention through all of this, we're going back to each of our planning commissions and just making sure this is good with them, making sure we're incorporating edits and changes they'd like to see in the campaign, in the HES program as well. So that they're, we're always updating our jurisdictions as well. So the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance. Lack of information of home energy performance is a significant barrier to improving energy efficiency. Several U.S. cities have adopted home energy score ordinances. And home energy assessment disclosure programs provide home buyers and occupants with an assessment of home energy performance, expected energy costs. It's actually a really great tool for first time home buyers, someone who doesn't, for someone, if you're trying to compare costs of the home, you don't often take in how much it's going to cost you to heat a house, how much your energy is going to be for one thing or the other, or even doing updates in the future and how much that's going to cost. And so there's this kind of cross barrier thing as well that we're trying to hit at. Stakeholder outreach. The largest portion of the stakeholder outreach is actually for the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance, not for the stakeholder outreach for the campaign. And that's really because we're going to be inviting six or seven focus groups that include developers, builders, realtors. Some of this work has been done by TCAT, but we really need to dive into it again and get a little bit deeper, like low income, you know, housing providers, just renters even, and just try, and first time home buyers, really trying to engage all aspects of our community to get their suggestions, get their take on a home energy score model ordinance. Alignment with state policies. So there's actually a bill in the state right now, HB 1433, which will most likely pass. And they've taken out some of the teeth of the bill. But what they have provided us is basically an energy score to adopt and given counties' authorities kind of authority to adopt it, is really what we're getting. And so they, they've taken out some of the licensing requirements as well, so we don't have to worry about those so much. And yeah, so I think it just went through, it's on second reading if it hasn't gotten read again, and will get kicked to the Senate probably here in the next couple of weeks. But just to say that all of our, all of our policy stuff so far is aligning with the bill too, just to make sure we're in compliance. Again, we're at the research and, uh, policy research and market assessment phase. That's what we're going to be doing in March after the ILA is signed, getting up to speed on that. I haven't dealt a whole lot with home energy scores before, so I'm learning a lot. And I'm taking the chance to really dive deep into what it means for our community as well. And then here's the budget. So personal electrification and planning, this is the, the Triple E campaign, we have about 7,000 advisory service, so it'll be an add-on to the Switches On, something we're still working through, getting ideas for contractors and stuff like that, we'll work with Switches On. So about 12,500. Stakeholder engagement for that will be about 10,000. And then developing a communications plan and materials, so about 5,000. And a lot of this, again, will be contracted with Lacey, or Olympia. And then, well, Olympia will hold the contract for a lot of this. And then stakeholder engagement for the Home Energy Score Policy will be up 25,000. Like I said, it's a lot for stakeholder engagement, because we need a lot of stakeholder engagement. For a total of 59,500 and 14,875 per partner. Questions and discussion. I see everyone's getting really excited, so.
Can I get a motion first?
You can get a motion.
Well, I move that we.
Press city manager.
Authorize the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement between Thurston County and the city's Olympia and Tomwater to implement the 2024 Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Regional Initiatives.
Second.
Move and second. Now discussion, Councilmember Greenstein.
So just one question, really. So in one of the slides, you showed that the state, what's in front of, what's in the legislature right now to be approved or not, allows for jurisdictions to require these home assessments. Is that part of the plan or not part of the plan for, to require this?
We have not, so we've discussed it a little bit. There are jurisdictions that mandate it and there are jurisdictions that don't. Obviously, the research shows, shows that if you mandate it, you're going to have higher compliance and then you have higher conversion rates to electrification.
And higher costs to the people.
But then you have the opposite, which is also something that we're trying to work through too. Like, how do we, as a jurisdiction, across jurisdictions, track this? Who's tracking this? How do we assess fines? And so there's a lot to work out. And there's a lot to, if we go the route of it's not mandated, how, how do we help get compliance rates high so that folks are really assessing their homes? So we haven't decided one way or the other. And the state bill doesn't say it has to be mandatory.
Right.
Yeah.
Councilmember?
I'm curious, because I've recently stepped onto the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative, what the role of the full committee is going to be in helping craft, especially the ordinance on the energy audits. Because I know we're going to be doing a lot of stakeholder-ing, but I'm sure that we're going to be getting briefed and have opportunities to provide feedback throughout the process.
Absolutely. Yep. So in terms of the EC, you all have four meetings a year. And so I think, I think it's a standing agenda item that we're updating EC where we're at on this process. And then the Community Advisory Work Group has a monthly meeting. And we actually just updated them on the Triple E campaign and got some preliminary insight into what they're thinking about the campaign. And then in March, we'll be going to the CA again and talking about the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance and getting some preliminary ideas. And so it's not just the EC or, we also have these, this community group that's really great that we have now to, to get their insight for as well. So we're doing stakeholder, we'll do probably two or three rounds of stakeholder engagement. So we'll come with kind of like a cold policy. They'll get a review it and then we'll get a, recraft it, add their suggestions, our planning commission's suggestions, come back to them. And then while we're doing that, coming back to the CA as well and the EC.
The other thing I wanted to mention, it's not a question, but it's in the staff report, a lot of the funding for the second phase that starts in 2025 is.
Yep.
Inflation Reduction Act funds. So we've got a whole bunch of money coming to our communities from the federal government. And this is a way that we can spend those.
Yep, absolutely.
Including those home prints that will qualify. You know, I think it's up to 16,000 a household that you can get back from the federal government and the home prints will be covered by that. So between the state and the federal, federal dollar, federal government, the, there's a lot out there that, that we won't have, you know, that we won't have to be paying for and our end user's not going to have to be paid for. They just have to make sure we're lining those up so it's easy to do, which is all, we're already heading that, that direction. So that's what's, what's great, is it's, if there's a rebate out there, if you can't get, if you don't know how, how to apply for it and it's easy, then, you know, almost like it doesn't matter. But that's why it's so important that we're, we're doing that. Deputy Mayor?
So I, I remember when, you know, a lot of this was coming down from and through TRPC. And, and so is this, you know, I, I know that they did a lot of the, the early preliminary work, putting this together. And so is this considered to be like a full handoff to, to, to you guys? And then are you guys planning on reconnecting with TRPC on this as, as things redevelop? Or how does that, how's that relationship?
Yeah. So with our signing of the collaborative ILA that, if you'll remember, I would think I was here in December or something like that, we fully handed off the collaborative and all of the regional initiatives to the jurisdictions now. And TRPC is still a partner with us on the plan. And so just like our other partners, we're bringing them in as we need to have discussions and make sure this is good for them. I mean, even with the Triple E campaign, Rebecca and Pamela at Thurston and Olympia respectively have already been talking with PSC how they do rebates, you know. And so bringing in TRPC, we still have really great working relationships with them. I mean, Allison's great. We, we just got a, a white paper that we needed from them. And so, yeah, we're definitely collaborating still.
And then, so I, is, if, if there has to, well, I know it's not going to be have to, but if there is an, an additional inspection in order to sell your property, is that, is that something that, that has to be picked up by the seller that cost and or?
There are different ways to do it. Yeah, it does not necessarily have to be picked up by the seller. You can put it, I think, I mean, you probably know about more of your realtor. You can put it back on like the realtor. There's ways to do it and it helps low income folks as well to do it. But yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a lot of different ways. At the end of the day, there's so much federal dollars out there that it shouldn't cost the seller or, you know, it'll end up being a rebate, tax rebate out, so it will, it will flush itself out. But yeah, so it's, there's a, I, there's a lot of discussion before we get to that point.
Yeah, okay. So then I, then, then there's, I probably shouldn't even mention this point, but is there, are we talking about like a, a new industry of, of energy assessment people and and?
Yeah. Yep, job force training as well. So there, the federal government actually has job force training for energy assessor, and we've, we've talked about some of the goals, like, as we work through this process is adding potentially so many new jobs to the area. Because actually, right now, there's not, I think they have to come from north or up south, from down south, energy assessors to do anything in Thurston County. So we don't really have the industry, which would add.
Yeah, there's, there's not enough for sure. There, we went through this whole phase of doing energy efficiency through, actually through TCAT helped, helped do it several years ago. And we put out a whole reprogram where it was paid for and yet, anyway. So we, we've done this sort of thing before, but that is the big question about having a mandate. Because if we're having to wait for someone to do it and try to sell your house, that could be a big issue if we don't have the people in place to be able to do that in a timely fashion. So there's a lot to talk about. It's like one of those everythings, it's, it looks really good and it sounds really good, but then you have to make sure the practical, practical, you can actually do it. So there's some, still a lot of discussion here. I, I think what we're going to have to do is wait, see what comes out of the state legislation. And I think they're probably going to be pushing us on whatever we do here.
Well, I mean, from looking at it, it looks like the state legislature will give us the option of whether they're making it mandatory, you know, and that, that's my concern. If in fact, we, this comes back with the model ordinance having any kind of requirement or this being mandatory, there's no way in the world I could possibly support it for the simple fact that we spend half of our time, at least half of our time, if not more, talking about the lack of affordable housing in our community. And here we are looking at something to add yet another cost to homes, to a buyer of a home. You know, we go through this with things constantly. We have the new building, you know, energy building code, which added $14,000 to the cost of a home. I get it, we want to be energy efficient, absolutely. But at the same time, we constantly are talking about a lack of affordable housing and we keep passing more things that drive up the cost of housing. We can't have it both ways. You know, we're going to have to make some decisions. Do we really care about affordable housing or is it all going to be about energy efficiency? We got to pick and choose, because you can't do both. But this is not the, we're not on the ordinance at this point.
We're not even there.
So I'm okay, but once we get the ordinance, just, just making it clear that if there's any mandatory in there at all, it would be an absolute no for me.
I just want to mention that the staff team is not, we are 100% privy to those conversations. The CA have already, our Community Advisory Work Group has already brought up, you know, because there's a whole component about affordability and then there's also the whole component about low income housing and middle income housing. Yeah, so we're, we're excited to see what comes out of the legislature as well and what kind of, you know, guidance we get from them. And yeah, we're in the planning phase and we'll, we'll see how it shakes out, but yeah.
Anything else from council? Okay. Well, there's a, a motion, a second, to authorize the city manager to sign this interlocal agreement. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed?
Nay.
There's one nay. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey.
So next up is boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm first and I do not have a report. Transportation Policy Board meets next week, along with the mayor's forum, meets this, this Friday. So next up is deputy mayor.
I do have one quick report from the EDC. We met on January 24th and we had a good budget overview. There are two new positions available at the EDC. One of them is a Communications and Marketing Manager. The other one is an Executive Assistant Administrative Assistant. Let's see, Lacy Makerspace was also on the agenda. There will be an opening with the, for the new 10,000 square foot Lacy Makerspace up from 4,000 square feet and that should be at the end of March. I'm hearing dates like March 23rd, somewhere in that, in that neighborhood. The, the Economic Development District that, that the EDC has been working on for the Pacific, Salish, Thurston, Mason, all the, our new collaborative, did get its UBI. And next is going to be the EIN. So hopefully, by the time April rolls around, there will be an executive director. I know that that position goes out on, in March. So hopefully, in the next four months, the EDD will have a director and be up and running. DCYF has a program that is designed to give out 36 $50,000 grants to daycares in the area and that are part of their system, who have the ability or capacity to expand and accept more children. And so expansion doesn't mean a physical extension, expansion of a building. It could be that they hire someone so that they can take more, they, you know, add a bathroom. There's a lot of different things that expansion can mean, but in, in the childcare desert that we're having, it, it seems like a viable, one viable thought, plan, idea that could help in some of this, this crisis that we're in for childcare. The, the CBNI scale up is up and running right now. There's, there was 195 people registered for that.
CBNI?
Oh, Center for Business and Innovation, which is a part of the Economic Development Council. They have a Spanish version now as well, and 37 businesses signed up for that Spanish version. So the outreach and the DEI efforts are, are really working. The Inspire Women's Business Conference is May 23rd. So that information is available on the EDC website. And lastly, there's a board retreat for the EDC on the 5th of, of October, but that is not the last thing. The last thing is that the Department of Ecology provided guidance for cleanup for the, the brewery in Tomwater. And the cost is going to be about 3 million to get that done. And Tomwater is actively secure, seeking funds for, for, to absorb some of that cost. So there may be an ask coming from that in some capacity or another. And that is my report.
Councilmember Greenstein?
So I do not have a report tonight, but if I could just take a moment. I think many of you knew Greg Stevens, so I just wanted to take a moment to give my condolences to the Stevens family. Greg Stevens was a very important part of this community, very active, extremely active in Rotary and other philanthropic things and just was an all-around great guy and did a lot for this community. So just wanted to take a moment to give my condolences to the Stevens family.
Yeah, that came as a, as a shock. Obviously, Greg is a long time, of course, I know him through, through Rotary, but really through his constant volunteering and within this community as well. And he's did a lot around fetching issues. He's been very, very supportive. And so, yeah, it's, my condolences go out to his family and to everyone who's, who knew him knows what a loss this is for, for our community.
Next up is Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for recognizing Greg, appreciate that. He's a great man. I just have one report. Thurston County Law and Justice Council met on the 18th of January, January. And the main notable things that I took out of there was we're working on the council charter and we're, we're adding a, a couple reps. The racial equity program manager is a, we're adding them in as a voting member as well as criminal justice regional manager. And then it came to my attention that, our attention, that there was no sitting member from the Squawson tribe. So we're actively trying to get ahold of the Squawson tribe to see if we can't get a rep on there for the council as well as JBLM. So I reached out to First Corps and see if we can't get a member, because I mean, that's being the military community, it seems like we, we need to have those important members on that council. So other than that, we're, we're working on the charter. We had some elections. It seems like Patrick O'Connor and John Toonhye. It seems like Patrick O'Connor and John Toonheim keep switching back and forth from chair to vice chair, and that's what they did this year. I actually nominated them both and unanimously approval, but John's the chair this time, so they're just switching. But other than that, that's pretty much the significance of the meeting. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Cox.
Okay. Well, I have a quick report on the Intercity Transit Authority meeting of January 17th. The largest part of the meeting was taken up with a report by Jonathan Yee on how intercity transit is going to get to zero emissions. So this is a transition plan to get us there. It'll go in phases, and right now, they're going to stick with what they call clean diesel and watch the technology because they're competing technologies with hydrogen cell electric and then battery electric buses. Hydrogen is more expensive, but it yields a longer route and requires less infrastructure than totally electric buses. And they've gotten some grant money, so they're gonna buy five hydrogen cell buses for a demonstration project, not only to see how the buses perform in this climate and all, but also to really get a good understanding of what it takes to keep these buses powered out, what the infrastructure needs are, and, and that sort of thing. So that, that was the, the main thing on that. And I'm, I'm really thankful to be joining that board again. It's a really great operation and good group of people. Let's see, the Regional Housing Council met on January 24th, and we agreed to ask the Department of Enterprise Services to allow a two-week grace period for people living at the Desmond Drive homeless encampment to register, if they're not already on the list of sanctioned individuals, to register for housing. And those that refuse to join the sanctioned list, should Enterprise Services, you know, allow this time extension, then they will be trespassed. I just got word that Enterprise Services has acknowledged, received the letter, but has not responded to the request. And meanwhile, as was reported by a commenter early in the meeting, a contractor for DES has been clearing brush, has been limbing tree branches eight to 10 feet off the ground, and cleared, I believe it was three campsites this past week from there. The Housing Council also asked, agreed to ask the Department of Commerce to release the remaining shelter beds in Thurston County that they have reserved for the right-of-way program. And what we're finding now that the right-of-way program is winding down is that there are beds that aren't being used because they're tied up with that. So Commerce just responded and identified areas that will need to be talked through in order for that to happen. So this is just, just freshly in, and we're gonna have to identify a work group on, to figure out those steps with Commerce. And hopefully, that will, that will happen. Let's see, we also seated Commissioner Emily Klaus, who is replacing Commissioner Carolina Mejia, as the county commissions representative. And she, per agreement, since the cities have the chair, she will be vice chair. And we also agreed to create an opportunity fund to support proposed projects that miss the regular funding cycle. We have a housing grant cycle for capital funds. It's a, called the pipeline. But we've had instances where a proposed project came in that was a great project, but they missed the window for the pipeline. So we've been trying to figure out ways not to miss an opportunity, and so we're trying to identify funding that would go to that. And these funds would primarily pay for acquisitions, like buying an old motel, or that's, or buying land, or that sort of thing. So that's the gist of that one, and then, am I missing one? No, I don't think so. A lot...
Hasn't met yet.
Yeah, we haven't met yet, so I think that's it.
So, thank you. I just wanted to step in here, since we're talking about Desmond Drive, and I think maybe there may be some, you know, some misinformation out there that this is somehow a City of Lacey initiative where, that we're doing anything but following the rules of the landowner, which is DES, right? And so, you know, we've had a long-term MOU with the landowner there, and Commerce is the one that is dictating the terms in this circumstance of who's on a list and who's not on a list, based on the MOU that we've had for, for many years. That doesn't solve the issue of the other, other people who may not be on the list, and I know there is a need to make sure we can adequately see who is there and who can qualify for which program. But a lot of confusion's happening here. There's a specific program on, based on an MOU we have with people that we know who've been there that is according to an MOU we've had in place. Through that MOU, we've, and the great work of our mobile outreach team, we have the names of people who are authorized to be there through the MOU. And according to that list and available spaces, everyone who's there has the opportunity to go into some housing. Of course, we are just there in support of the landowner, which is the state. And we are also there to try to help Commerce, you know, with the, with their program that they have, specifically for right-of-way, which is, which is what the existing people through our MOU have access to housing through. And so I know there, it's a, it's more complicated than that, but we are just trying to follow the wishes of the landowner. And yet, a lot of questions are coming to us as the City of Lacey. What are you doing, City of Lacey? Well, we are just responding to the landowners. So I know that might be hard for some other people to understand, but we're, what we're doing is trying to follow a, a set process that's been given to us, and we're trying to follow it to, and be as helpful as we possibly can to, to people who are in unfortunate circumstances there on, on the property. And so that's where we're at. I'm trying to make it as clear as possible. This isn't a Lacey program. We are just trying to help the state, and there's people on state property, and we've at, we've been out there with our mobile outreach team for years, trying to do what we can to offer services to, to those individuals there. And we will continue to do that for as long as the people are there. We'll, we'll continue to try to offer services to people that are there.
Well, I could add, the, the goal of our, our management program out there has been to manage the camp down to zero campers by helping the people who are there find other shelter. And so we, we got it down from 26 people down to eight people, and now I think it's down to, to four sites. So a lot of, a lot of progress was made during that time, but I do, you know, I, I, I think it would be a mistake to characterize Lacey as not being compassionate through all this, because, you know, I know that our mobile outreach team and, and CRU officers have been trying to be as helpful as they can to individuals out there and seeing to their needs. So it's an emotional thing, and it's, you know, I know that there's a lot of concern out there from a lot of individuals, but I think, I think it's important to clarify Lacey's role in this and our intention in this, and the intention is to try to help manage that down to zero and get better accommodations for everybody. And unfortunately, you know, some of the, we're very limited on shelter beds and types of accommodations there are. So even though an individual may need, or may be prescribed for a certain type of housing, if there's not a bed available in that type of housing, but there is over here in a shelter, some hard choices have to be made.
Yeah, and, and hard choices for the landowner that needs to be made, not for the City of Lacey, right? It's the landowner that, at the end of the day, needs to make decisions about what they're gonna do with people who are on their property. That's not a City of Lacey decision. That's a State of Washington DES decision. It's their property, we're here to try to support and help as many people as we possibly can. Okay, councilmember Vasquez.
All right. I have one report, because Lindsay effectively gave one of my other reports. She just gave us a briefing on the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative and what the plan is, so I don't need to go over that again. I did go to my first meeting, and that's exciting, and I look forward to attending the kickoff for the Switches On campaign that she mentioned, which is happening on February 15th. So I will be representing us there. The Thurston Regional Planning Council met last Friday and covered a couple of things, including election of new officers. So I am now the chair of the Thurston Regional Planning Council. We also elected a vice chair and a secretary. So Amy Evans Harding from the Port of Olympia is the vice chair, and John O'Callaghan from the great city of Tonino is the secretary. So we're looking for time to set agenda-setting meetings, and I look forward to leading on that board for Lacey. During the meeting, we also put together a committee to provide evaluative feedback for the executive director. Every year, the executive director, Mark Daly, asks for feedback on how he's doing and, you know, is he meeting the goals of the organization? And so this year, I'll be assisting with that work as the chair. We also talked about the Housing Needs Allocation Plan that Lacey had a briefing on a couple of weeks ago, but we got a full report from Allison Osterberg on the assessment of how many units of low-income housing and different kinds of housing we need in Lacey, in Olympia, across the community. And there was some discussion, because the Housing Allocation Plan that we reviewed just says, you know, this is how many units of housing we need in these different sort of economic or income brackets. We have a lot of need for low-income and affordable housing across the region. But there's also some decisions that jurisdictions are probably going to need to make, because we have our Thurston climate goals, and the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan calls for us to increase the amount of housing that we build close to urban centers. Like, instead of building further out into the, the rural areas and the urban growth area, that plan to reduce carbon emissions, create more walkable communities, decrease how much people need to drive, calls for us to build more housing close to city centers. But it's, right now, the way that our zoning kind of pans out, it, it's easier for us to build more housing in the urban growth areas. So right now, the plan calls for, I think, 14% of new residential units to be developed in our Lacey urban growth area. But our Thurston Regional Climate Plan says that we should be building no more than 5% of new units in the urban growth area and the rural areas. So it's gonna be up to Lacey to figure out, in what ways can we incentivize the development of density, like, building more of those units closer to city centers? I think the conversation we've been having related to the neighborhood commercial districts kind of, you know, connects with this, because we're trying to create places where people want to congregate around those neighborhood centers, so you don't have to drive as much, you can walk to the grocery store, you can walk to your childcare center. So I'm sure a lot more conversations need to be had with us in the future about how we support the development of more affordable housing in Lacey.
Yeah, I know, that's a, it's the catch-22, right? We, of course, we want more affordable housing in our, our urban core, but that's the most expensive place to build housing. So, I mean, that, that's where, you know, that's where we have to figure out some incentives, because we're, we're trying to build the most affordable housing and the most expensive place to build it.
I think it's, yeah, short-term, it's expensive to build closer to the city because it's already developed, so we have to break something apart to build housing in a place that's already got, I don't know, a parking lot built. But it also means we don't have to pump infrastructure out into the rural areas, like water lines and electricity and sewers, and so, yeah, there's a lot of things to consider in the future. And this is all gonna feed into, I'm sure, our work on our comprehensive plan that's happening in the next couple of years. So that's mostly what we did at TRPC. And then the Board of Health meets next Tuesday, and we're gonna be talking about our vision, mission, and like, the goals for the Board of Health, our strategic plan for the Thurston County Board of Health, because we've got new membership, new leadership on the Board of Health, and we need to figure out what our overarching goals and values for that organization are. So stay tuned.
Do you have an update on the legislation that would actually shrink back the number of people on the board?
I am not tracking that bill closely. I'm not sure if that's still alive and where it's at in committee.
It's a, I don't know, the committee cutoff is next Tuesday, and we're gonna have a update on the legislative priorities of next Tuesday's work session, so we should have information right up to the moment.
Sounds good. Okay. Councilmember Dunning.
I have no new meetings to report, but if I can make one very quick point on the observation from the EDC meeting, they handed out a, a little booklet with all the economic data from the last year, and in bright, you know, bold letter or bold words, it said, "All cities in Thurston County increased retail sales per capita," semicolon, "except for Lacey." So I just wanted to really emphasize that, and I know everyone here wants to work really hard on that, but I, I just, I almost took that as like a little, you know, shot of pride, so I hope that's something that we never have to, to see again in, in any pamphlet or anything that is, is not highly to us in, in the best possible ways.
So, what, what did it say again?
So retail sales per capita, bold letters, retail sales per capita in every city in Thurston County increased retail sales per capita, except for Lacey.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's a, that's a tough one, and the reason why, and, and, and we've talked about this for a long time, is no other city in Thurston County has grown nearly as much as we have, but our retail sales has grown every year, right?
Except for last year.
Well, our retail sales was, is, we had a record year last year for retail sales, and we have a record so far this year for retail, so, well, well...
The, the record is for retail sales tax.
Sales tax.
That doesn't necessarily, remember, when you have 8% inflation, as we did last year for part of the year, and we grew by 2%, that's not really growth in sales, it's only growth in revenue.
That's true. It's growth in, growth in revenue, but it has increased. Our retail sales tax collection has increased. A lot of that is inflation.
There's a lot of context to it, which I understand.
There's a lot of context.
It's not what you want to show up and see. You know, you're like, oh, you just had to throw that in there, so...
Well, yeah, obviously, we've grown so much as a city. It's, it's, it's sales per population, that's, that's a tough one. It's, it's something we've talked about here quite a bit, but we have continued, our sales tax collection has continued to grow pretty significantly. But that's a good, that's a point. We definitely go on beyond that list.
Yeah.
Ever.
I didn't mention it.
Okay. You're right, you didn't mention it, deputy mayor. So with that, we have reached the end of our agenda.
A point of clarification real quick on my report, something I left out. I did want to emphasize that we do have members on the council from the Squawly and Chehalis.
Yeah.
It's just Squawson that we do not. I feel it's important enough to try to get someone on that board, same with JB, JBLM.
Definitely JBLM too, as well, for sure, yeah. Okay, now we've reached the end of the agenda. Just to let this council know, next Tuesday, it's a work session, and I will not be in town, so the deputy mayor will, I'll be running that meeting. And so I will be celebrating my 50th birthday. Yeah, so it's, 50th birthday is not, not, not till, you know, another week or so, but we're taking this time to celebrate it, so...
And you don't want to celebrate at a work session?
No, I, I want me to celebrate it from Mardi Gras in New Orleans. So I'm looking forward to that. I've gone there with the first lady, we can't, can't wait, so we're leaving bright and early tomorrow morning. And with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. As always, you keep it classy, Lacey. And without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Happy birthday, soon.
Thank you.
Pretty neat or whatever.